3 million people in the U.S. are affected by epilepsy. A very common brain disorder, about one in 10 people will have at least one seizure in their lifetime.
Purple Day is a global effort to promote epilepsy awareness around the world. Purple Day was founded in 2008 by Cassidy Megan when she was nine years old. Our Girl Scout troop is doing a community service project in support of Purple Day, which is March 26th. We are asking everyone in Wausau to wear purple on March 26th to show our support for the many people who suffer from epilepsy every day, including me.
I was also diagnosed with epilepsy over 30 years ago. I used to be embarrassed about it, mostly because no one seemed to understand. But I am proud of what these girls have learned by doing this service project, and we want to thank you, Mayor Hewner, City Council, and all of Wausau for your help in spreading awareness for epilepsy. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you, girls, for coming in here. It took a lot for you to read in front of all of these people. Okay, why don't you come on over to the center in here, okay? All right. Now it's time to proclaim March 26th as Epilepsy Day. Okay, are you ready? And thank you again for coming forward. Proclamation: Whereas Purple Day is a global effort dedicated to promoting epilepsy awareness in countries around the world, and the Anita Kaufman Foundation joined forces with the Epilepsy Foundation of Nova Scotia to bring Purple Day into countries all over the world; and whereas epilepsy is one of the most common neurological conditions estimated to affect over 65 million people worldwide, 2.2 million people in the United States, whereas one in 10 persons will have at least one seizure during his or her lifetime; and whereas the public is often unable to recognize common seizure types or how to respond with appropriate first aid; whereas Purple Day will be celebrated on March 26th annually to increase understanding, reduce stigma, and improve the quality of life for people with epilepsy throughout the country and globally. Now therefore, I, Kathy Hewner, Mayor of the City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim March 26th, 2015, as Purple Day, in an effort to raise awareness of epilepsy in the United States of America. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mariah sold the...
How many cookies did you sell?
I had my mom do that.
First of all, thank you. Yep? Thank you. Thank you, girls. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's a great cause. Next on the agenda, we have Neil Tippie, Chamber of Commerce, and his annual report. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Hewner, President Coast, council members, and distinguished officials. Mayor Hewner asked me to come and give a report on the Chamber of Commerce, and that's something I'd really like to do, so I will try to keep this short. But my definition of short and my wife's definition of shorter sometimes at odds. I'd like to thank the city for all the support that they've given the chamber over the years. They've been very generous, and we hope that we've been good stewards of the building that we're in and the money that you donate each year. I provided you first with a set of charts that kind of go over the financials for the chamber. What you'll see is that our expenses on those charts seem significantly higher than our dues revenue. And that's a bit deceiving, because some of our event expenses are covered by the cost of the events, or greens fees for our golf outing, reservation tickets for our annual dinner, those sorts of things. And we also raise funds through other non-dues revenue sources. You'll also notice that since the end of 2012, our expenses have been reduced by about $30,000 a year. And that's for the past two years, so we're maintaining a pretty good trajectory on maintaining expenses. Our golf outing generates about $5,000 a year in net revenue, and those revenues are dedicated solely to scholarships. Three years ago, we gave out three $1,000 scholarships to Wausau High School seniors. The last two years, it's been $5,000, five $1,000 scholarships, and this year will be another five $1,000 scholarships. So we're quite proud of that. And over the past years, since we've been doing this, we've given out over $55,000 in scholarships to Wausau students. And when we see the applications coming, and we'll get 2025 applications, we have to narrow that down, and that is really, really difficult, because these students are really, really good. I've also provided, I've got some information here on chamber expenses, support for community events, and the evolving role of the chamber. And I'll touch briefly on each of these. But I'd also like to tell you that I am privileged to carry the message about Wausau to several other organizations that I'm involved with. I serve as Vice President of the Fulton County CIC along with Dennis Richardson. I'm on the Executive Committee of the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation. I'm a founding member and Executive Committee member of the Northwest Ohio Benefits Alliance, and a member of Congressman Bob Lattes Economic Advisory Group, and a member of the Northwest State Business Management Advisory Group, as well as a number of other organizations. That way, my wife can't tell where I'm at any time. Some of the things that we do, some of our expenses over the last couple of years, we've updated our website and our member management system, and that's at a cost of about $2,000 annually. And this year, we just made an upgrade to that to make our website mobile, so you can get it on iPads and Androids and iPhones and so forth. Now, that was another $750. We also upgraded the, had to repair the "Welcome to Wausau" sign out at 108 and Airport Highway. That was about $4,700. In the Chamber building, which I have to explain to people that it really is a city building, that the city generously lets us use, we've put new carpet in that in the past year to the tune of $2,500, some new office furniture for about $650. On the float that's used by the Homecoming Committee and the Christmas Parade, we just updated, put new carpet and lights on that to the tune of about $600. And Mr. Sandberg had donated $4,800 to the chamber to be used for a flagpole out at the fairgrounds. We transferred that $4,800 over to the fire department for the 9/11 memorial, so the flagpole could be there. We support a lot of different community organizations. Cruise Night's a big one, the farmer's market, homecoming, Christmas parade. And it's important to these organizations that we exist, because most of those organizations don't have somebody to answer the phone for them and tell them when it's, when we get the calls in for Cruise Night. If it's looking like rain, we get so many calls from folks that don't want to drive their cars and get them wet. They want to know if the Cruise Night's canceled or is it on? So those calls come right up to the deadline. Same thing with farmer's market, homecoming, when is homecoming? A lot of calls about the fairgrounds. There's events going on there all the time, whether it's the Crosley, whether it's the antique motorcycles. We get, not just the fair, and all the fair events, we get calls trying to find out about that, about those things. We get calls from, got a call last week, I think, from somebody from looking for their cellphone that they thought that they lost at D.B. Billiards. So we had to track that down to get them to the right place. Folks were, lady was engaged to speak at the Masonic organization, and told me she didn't know how to get home to somebody, so we were able to point them in the right direction to get there. So we act almost like a Yellow Pages locally. I got a call today, somebody looking for a hotel in the area for June 6th. So we got a lot of those types of calls. But in addition to that, the role of the chamber, especially in smaller communities, is evolving. It's going from a, what has been called, and I cringe when I hear this sometimes, the community party planner, to more of the business advocate. We try to engage in trying to find ways to have business members reduce expenses. If we can find discounted services through group buying plans, we try to identify those and share those with the members. And that's where this Northwest Ohio Benefit Alliance that I formed along with about four other chambers, now there are 16 chambers, the Better Business Bureau, the Home Builders Association, and the Toledo Bar Association are all members. And that group represents about 350,000 individuals or people, employees, and that gives us a tremendous amount of buying power, so we can get some discounted services. We have to be careful, though. Recently, we had an opportunity to get a discounted service for office supplies through Home Depot or Office Depot and Office Max. However, we have a chamber member that provides those services, a couple of them provide those services, so we have opted out of that to protect the revenue of the local businesses. We try to also generate non-dues revenue from other sources, so we can keep our dues stable or as static as possible over time. Last year, we were able to publish a calendar that identified probably about 700 events and all the photography, and it was local people, places, and events. The photography was done locally, the graphic design was done locally, the printing was done locally. So that has created a line of business for some folks. This year, we weren't able to sell enough advertising to produce 3,500 of these calendars. It cost us about $12,000 to produce the calendars, and we give those away for free. Primarily, a good chunk of them probably half are distributed through the schools, to the students, to take home. The rest are through banks, through chamber members, various sources. We also published a community directory that has a directory of all the local businesses in the back, sorted either by business category or by business name. Again, that was another $12,000 to produce, and we tried to sell enough ads that we'll make a net profit on that. And last year, between the two, I think we had a net profit of about $7,500. We provide networking opportunities through the various events, business after hours, through some of the committees that we have. And one of the things that really amazed me when I came to Wausau, about the same time David Reich did, like we were at the same meeting the first time he was introduced, is the gift certificates. We issue between $18,000 and $20,000 in gift certificates every year that go to, that can be used only at local businesses. And to see the folks that call in to, whether it's at the schools with a teacher that's retiring, somebody's birthday, people coming in and getting these gift certificates. In the past two days, I have written 199 gift certificates. So it's pretty impressive to see how the community supports the local businesses. The other, some of the other things that we do, we take inquiries for a lot of local information. A big, big inquiry that we get is about local housing. I bet every week, I get a call from people looking for realtors or looking for rental Another large inquiry that we get are just about local businesses. You know, who sells this, where can I go to for that? We get a lot of those. And the third one is for local event information, and it doesn't matter what the event is, we're getting the calls. That's not to say that the other organizations aren't getting calls, but it seems that folks find us as a good central point to try and get that information. I also have to pay the bills over there, answer the mail, keep the books, keep the board informed of events going on, and I'd like to thank Mayor Hewner for coming to our board meeting last week. And as a matter of fact, at that board meeting last week, I feel that it's important to have close ties with the public sector, because the public sector needs to know kind of what's going on in the business community as far as economic development, some of those things. I had a conversation with President Coast here a couple of weeks ago about the Nature Fresh project that was going. And as Dennis will attest, that's been being worked on for probably over a year now. And while we were working on it, other communities were working on it as well. The other communities have nothing to show for it. So it may appear to those communities that that economic development effort isn't doing anything, but they are, they're working very hard. And when I was talking to the Economic Development Group a couple of weeks ago, I made the comment that Matt Gilroy, who's the Executive Director now, it's like a dock floating on the water, but the legs are paddling away underneath. You don't see what's going on underneath, but there's a lot going on. In an effort to try and bring a lot of that information a little bit closer to the public sector, the Chamber Board has just passed, or not passed, a resolution, will vote on again next month, to establish two positions, ex officio positions on the Chamber Board for the Mayor and the President of Council, so they can attend all of our meetings, participate fully, to see what's going on, ask questions, and so forth. So we're eager to see that occur. I also get to go out and visit with members. We just had, last Saturday night, the Wausau Mighty Indians staff took on Channel 13, and I got a call on the, a few days before that, from a lady that has a student over at the schools, who wanted to see if we could get some signs put up on Shoup Avenue for a video that they wanted to send to Channel 13 to run on there. And they wanted to say, "Welcome, Channel 13, All-Stars." So I spent a good afternoon going up and down Shoup Avenue, and I found out that there are about 25 signs on Shoup Avenue where people can put up information. And I was really impressed again with the merchants in Wausau and their eagerness to support an event in Wausau. I don't know if any of you saw the video that was produced, but you can go to our website and see that, or go to our Facebook page and see that. So it was pretty impressive. And then the staff one. And we also, we also conduct ribbon cutting. I think in the last, I don't know, six weeks, eight weeks, we've had four ribbon cuttings. And the newspapers, The Expositor and The Village Reporter, are very generous in coming out and taking pictures of those and putting a little blurb in about the ribbon cuttings. But I think what gets lost sometimes in the community is that you'll see a ribbon cutting, and it looks like a one-time event. What we're really seeing over the series of four ribbon cuttings in a short period of time is people, individuals, willing to invest money in taking a risk and starting a business or expanding a business in Wausau. So that's, that's pretty impressive. And I can't tell you how many ribbon cuttings we've had over the last two and a half years, but it's been a ton of them. So there's a lot of activity going on in Wausau. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
You were very thorough, that's for sure. And I want to say that your directory that you made, I sent to the CGI video that we were putting together, and they said that was very informative, so that right there, your directory and things that we had.
Good. But I think I said also, I gave Meg a CD that had a lot of photos in it, and I can't take credit for all those photos, but someone, but Dave Bliss from Wausau has a bunch of them in there.
And INTV is going to be giving quite a big boost. Thank you, Neil.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Rebecca Martinez? Rebecca had asked to come up and speak four weeks ago, and our meeting was full last two weeks ago, so she was bumped up to the...
I'm a talker, so I printed all this out, so I would stay on track. And my name is Rebecca Martinez. I live here in Wausau. I want to start off by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here. In every level of government, we find rules, regulations, and charters. These help out build a system of a government that is fair and efficient. On occasions, we encounter hiccups in our system, and today, we find ourselves with a hiccup here in our council, but with a clear resolution, and that's our city charter. Let's begin with a statement of honest mistakes in asking and talking to people about what an honest mistake is. In other words, most people said that it is, "I am not responsible, but yet I am sympathetic." Mr. Estrada, you fell to be a registered voter when you were appointed to your seat and sworn in, and you didn't bring it to our attention as your constituents or to the city council. It took someone else to bring it to the attention of the people. And I have to wonder if that's really an honest mistake. For example, if our city, sorry about that, if our city budget is off a few thousand dollars, is that an honest mistake? Do we just chump that up as a, you know, oops, where'd it go? Or if probationers are out there violating the terms of probation, is that an honest mistake because they didn't know? We have to educate ourselves, and we need to know these things, because these are just common sense things in our society. As a registered voter and as one of your constituents, the statement you got, what you asked for, is kind of offensive, sir. Once again, it is a total disregard to the rules and laws pertaining to our city charter by appointed and elected officials. Each and every one of you sit on this council by either appointment or election. Your job is to represent the best interests of the citizens, that would be me, of Wausau and our community, and to follow the law. Our city charter enacted by people before you and people who have done great things for our community, people who have worked hard to build Wausau. Ultimately, it will be the voters who decide the future of this council and who sits on it. So as those of you who think that it was an honest mistake and brush it aside, I ask you to please move aside, because I'd like to go ahead and have a seat there on your council, because if the rules don't apply to Mr. Estrada, they shouldn't apply to me. They should not apply to me at all. So regarding your situation, Mr. Estrada, this is not personal. We live in a law, a world, and a country of laws and regulations. I mean, my statement just now is utterly ridiculous. Who's going to move over? Who's going to give me their seat so that I can sit there, approach with my own personal agenda, my own rules? It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. Yet, our city charter is pretty simple and plain. Members of the council shall be electors of the municipality at the time they file for office or during the term of office. When you filed, you were not an elector of this city. So I think that's pretty simple regarding that. It's right there. This whole situation has brought a negative spotlight to this community. I worked in Bowling Green. I hear the things that other people say. My brother works in Toledo. He hears the things that people say. It's dividing our council, which I cannot understand that. Our charter is the law of this community. It's the law of this city. For people not to stand behind the charter and not to go forward setting aside personal agendas and personal feelings, then I think you as well don't hold a seat on this council, in my opinion. It makes us look ridiculous. We have been on the news for negative things in the last month, and that is not what this city is about. As a registered voter and citizen, I ask the council to bring this issue back to the table, and again, vote based off of what the charter states, not personal opinions, not personal agendas, and do what is right. Mr. Estrada, you said at the last meeting that you would humbly step down if council wants you to. If I came in here with half of registered voters' signatures, would you humbly step down because that's what your constituents want?
Is that what the question is?
That's what the question is, that you need to think about, because you represent us. You took a seat that you aren't entitled to. So I ask you to humbly and with some integrity resign your position as a council member. Take us out of the limelight. Take us out of the negativity. And yes, that's rhetorical. I only have so many minutes. I'm not going to dispute it. This is my right to talk and say what I have to say. So the City of Wausau's charter is not a charter of convenience, but it's a clear rule of law that you need to follow the rules, each and every one of us, especially you guys that sit on this council. Because like I said, elections are coming up. People are very much aware. They may not be sitting here right now today, but they will go to the polls. They will cast a vote. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, you brought up one portion of the law, which is the beginning, about filing. I didn't file it because I was appointed.
You were appointed.
The congressman passed away.
Members of the council shall be electors of the municipality at the time they file for office and during their term. You were in office, I believe, two weeks in term and not a registered voter.
And by the way of the charter, it says that I go through the remaining council members who have voted.
Sir.
And four of them come through.
You always have an argument for something, Mr. Estrada. Step down, or I will collect signatures, and I will file suit against the City of Wausau and question everything you voted on at your expense and the city's expense. Are the citizens of Wausau ready to foot the bill for you? It's not personal, but then do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay. Last on our list is Harold Stickley. Would you want to come up?
Sure. Good evening, Harold. I spoke with a few of you, this is over Mr. Estrada's appointment, and I spoke with Mr. Estrada on the phone. I did ask him out on out as an honorable person in honor of a quarter in the country that I served, where 58,000 of my kind, and I didn't give it all, because my name is not on a black granite wall. I only gave us some. But I ask you honorably to resign, because you can resign anytime, even the President of the United States, Richard Nixon, resigned his office. And you refused. So with that, you put it up to these council people and the mayor to do your dirty work, bottom line. You wasn't electoral when you took the office. In code and ordinance state law said you were supposed to be. So you're asking these people to come back in the election, three of you are going to be in the election, and answer to the people of this town, city, for your wrong choices, because you're going to be gone. You didn't get your petitions right, so you're not going to run. These other people, men and ladies, have to run. The mayor's going to run. She's got to answer a bunch of questions when she's ready to run because of you. She's the one that's going to take the heat in the frying pan, same as these other three people are going to take the heat in the frying pan. What law are we... of the United States, Richard Nixon, resigned his office. And you refused. So with that, you put it up to these council people and the mayor to do your dirty work, bottom line. You wasn't electoral when you took the office. In code and ordinance, state law said you were supposed to be. So you're asking these people to come back in the election, three of you is going to be in the election, and answer to the people of this town, city, for your wrongs. Because you're going to be gone. You didn't get your petitions right, so you're not going to run. These other people, men and ladies, have to run. The mayor's going to run. She's got to answer a bunch of questions when she's ready to run because of you. She's the one that's going to take the heat in the frying pan, same as these other three people are going to take the heat in the frying pan. What law are we going to break? I got a license to carry a concealed weapon, but I don't think the chief would let me carry it up here. I smoke Marlboros, but I don't think you'll let me smoke Marlboros here. So where do we draw the line on what law are we going to abide by? Or what law are we not going to abide by? Which one are we going to say, "Well, that's not that bad. We'll just sweep it under the rug"? As Mayor Matheny told me once, as Mayor Vogt told me more than once, and DeFord Schwab told me numerous times, very honorable man, had a bearing a few weeks ago. One wrong, two wrongs, three wrongs, never makes it right. Go back to the beginning, straighten it out, do it by the state law, the ordinance, the codes, whatever. Just do it that way. And then you never have a problem. Shane does that in his line of work. If he makes a little mistake, you go back to the beginning and you straighten it out by the law, not by, "Well, you know, it was okay." It's not okay. You need to do it by the law. That's all there is, or the ordinance, or the codes. And you guys are the ones that's going to put up with the bad publicity in September, October, and November of the election. He is not. But he's going to make you do the dirty work and put up with it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Any questions at all? Where are we?
If not, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Hal. Okay. Let's move on to committee reports. Utility Committee, please.
Oh, the Utility Committee met on Monday, March 9th. Jeff Sturts, myself, and Heather Coats, staff president, Dennis Richardson, David Wright, Meg Murphy. The reason for our meeting has to do with an expansion that Hoss Door has planned at the south end of their building, which, based on their existing plan, it would actually go over our 36-inch storm sewer. This particular storm sewer is actually the enclosed creek that runs from Booth Pond and ends up being the Turkeyfoot Creek. So we're looking into being able to move that storm sewer using our own workforce. And the estimates for the cost of the pipe and all the rest of the project would be This would also help us in the regard to actually getting a proper easement for that particular sewer, which right now it's an implied easement. So after discussing the project, there again, the cost of being the outlay of $32,366, we discussed with David Wright, the aspects of looking into RLF funding for that project. It would require an environmental review, and there also could be some time elements involved in a possible approval that might not work well for the overall project. But that is the recommendation that the Utility Committee has made and has before us at this time. And John asked me to read this because he didn't have his glasses.
I was going to ask that. That was very kind of you.
That's my recap real quickly of the highlights.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Make a motion to accept the Utility Committee's report and its recommendation.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Estrada. Is there any discussion? Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you. Department head reports. We'll start with David.
Okay. First, I'd like to start just bringing everybody's attention to Resolution 2015-12. This is authorizing the mayor to execute the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement. This is basically just the agreement with the RLF that our office, the Regional Planning Commission Office administers for the city of Waseon. This is the agreement between the state and Waseon for that funding program. It's, I believe, a three-year period. It's on an emergency tonight because we need to have it approved by April 19th, or April 9th, I believe, to get it back down to the state, signed and executed. Also, working with community development block grant issues as it pertains to Sarah's Garden, revolving loan fund dollars have been approved locally for that project. So working with the state to get those funds released at the moment. And then also, community development block grant dollars are also being used for the downtown revitalization program. So I'm hoping that we'll start seeing some activity here in the next few months.
Okay. Thank you. Trish?
It's been a busy couple of months at the fire department. We're up over 300 calls already this year, which is almost a call a day more than we normally average in a typical year. The civil service testing and interviewing has been completed, and the list of scores will be presented to the Civil Service Commission this Wednesday morning at their meeting for their approval. And the ambulance we've taken delivery of, and it's being stocked in licensing and everything in place, and it should be operational in the next few days for the starting of our transport from there. That's all I have, and if I may, I need to be excused for another appointment at 6:00 in the lot.
Yes. Thank you. Chief Torbit?
Just a couple of things real quick. Many of you know that I received a grant a couple of months ago for the purchase of Maucan for the county law enforcement officers. I'm working with Assistant Chief Kessler on setting up the protocols for that as well as the purchase of it. So we should have that out in the next couple of months to be distributed out to any of the departments in the county that wish to participate with that. Also, working, starting the initial stages of working on Safety Day, I think we're going to try and coincide that with the Chili Cookoff up here. Open house, something else to bring the people downtown for. Also, a reminder with the warmer weather, please keep an eye out for pedestrians. I've seen a lot more people walking, jogging, running, and kids out on bikes. So we're asking people to slow it down a little bit and go both ways.
Thank you. Tom is gone this afternoon. Dennis?
Resolution 2015-10 is the Toledo Edison easement, which you gave first reading to at the last meeting. Just a reminder that this time around for second reading, we're asking for an emergency. Toledo Edison asked that easement be in effect by the end of this month, and that's the only way to do that. As the committee of the whole, I address some questions about Resolution 2015-11, which has to do with the biosolids study. So if you have any questions about that, I'll, if there are any more questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Busy time for my office here in the upcoming weeks. Tomorrow, the screw pump bids will open for the water reclamation plant, and subsequently be evaluated and so on for award. On the 23rd of this month, the digester lid materials are supposed to be delivered also at the water reclamation plant. And on the 31st, the aeration and mixing equipment bid for the Shute Avenue Water Tower will open and be evaluated. Neil Tepe talked a little bit, touched on the Fulton County CIC. The executive committee met last week and has agreed to be the nonprofit handler, if you will, of the funds that are going to be generated by the county's new lodging tax. Those tax monies can only be spent on a very focused number of things. Fulton County intends to open up and operate a visitors bureau that will be across the road from the fairgrounds. Lastly, and happily, the Lenfoot Street project has cleared the Federal Highway Administration's review, and we are moving forward towards bidding of the project. Happy days.
Yeah. You say that with such enthusiasm.
Well, yes, I am enthusiastic about it. And actually, as state projects go, it doesn't seem like it, but it's really on the fast track. When we widened Shute Avenue, it was eight years from application to walking down the road, doing the final inspection. So this is happening much quicker.
That's what another man does. Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Jamie?
I don't have any new business tonight. However, I would like to schedule a finance meeting for a budget adjustment.
Okay.
I would just advise council or let them know with respect to that easement for Toledo Edison that it's my understanding that Mr. Dennis was also trying to obtain an easement on the other side of the road. And I think that easement has been drafted and recorded. So that should be up and running. And I think we will be recording after, assuming the council approves, the second reading of 2015-10. That passes the mayor and everybody signs on that. We'll be recording that tomorrow. And also, I finally appreciate the school's patience on the Ball Diamond transfer deed. That's been some time. We've been working on that. We're just at a point now where we're about ready to pass that on to them for their legal review. And I think we probably will eventually want a resolution by council authorizing the mayor to execute that deed. Previously, council, mayor, member, or some of you, there was a resolution authorizing the mayor at that time to enter into the land transfer agreement, which was just sort of a real estate contract, for lack of a better description, I think. For purposes, both entities are public entities. It's probably a good idea to have a resolution that can be recorded in case there's ever an issue or a question as to how that came about. That will, we'll let the school take a look at that deed, and then when they're happy with it, then we'll get that up for council to review.
Great. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry I annoyed you this last time.
Yeah, you did.
I forgot that this community development block grant public hearing, the first public hearing is tomorrow, County Commissioner Chambers. It's basically a required public hearing where we discuss the programs that are offered for 2015, go over grant ceilings, budgets. And then there's also the CDIS, extra outreach requirements that are going to be initiated this year. I will speak briefly on that also tomorrow. Just wanted to put that out there. That's at 10:00 on the County Commissioner Chambers.
On that?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to legislation. There's a discrepancy on our agenda. It says 2015-4, but the ordinance is 2015-5, and that's what we're going to go with on that. Ordinance 2015-5, amending section 505.01 of the qualified ordinance of the city of Waseon, dogs running at large, dangerous, or vicious dogs.
First reading. Go ahead.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Sturts. Is there any discussion? Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, ordinance 2015-5 passes on first reading. Thank you.
Mayor, just to clarify, Meg, do you know, is it your typo or is it mine? Not to point at your fingers, but just so we know which one it is.
I'm not 100% on that one, but I'll go with yours.
That was a lawyer's answer. Okay. Well, if it turns out to be four, we'll change that for me.
I can use four another time.
Well, I was just looking for the paperwork. I was like, this is, I don't have a four on here, so. Okay. Moving on. Resolution 2015-11, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Arcadius for a biosolid study for water reclamation plant.
Motion.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes. Yes.
Five days, zero days, Resolution 2015-11 passes on first reading.
Resolution 2015-12, authorizing the mayor to execute the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement with the state of Ohio Development Service Agency and declaring an emergency.
I move we suspend the rules and declare an emergency on Resolution 2015-12.
My second. Sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
Motion moved by Councilor Schamp and second by Councilor Estrada. Is there any discussion? Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries.
Final passage. Sorry.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Sturts. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, Resolution 2015-12 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Thank you. Second reading of legislation, Resolution 2015-10, authorizing the mayor to grant a permanent easement to Toledo Edison for a 12-foot strip on the east side of the right of way along Glenwood Avenue for underground electrical services and declaring an emergency.
I move we suspend the rules and declare an emergency on Resolution 2015-12.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Schamp and second by Councilor Coats. Is there any discussion? Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries.
Final passage.
Sorry.
Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Sturts. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, Resolution 2015-10 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Okay. We have nothing under third reading. Under new business, the only thing I wanted to express to council with CGNI is going to be contacting me tomorrow, the video people. If there's any events, if there's anything that you would like me to let them know besides the obvious Chili Fest, homecoming, things like that, that I've been trying to write things down, send me a text or call me tomorrow, let me know. I would love to have more information on that. Okay. Moving on. Anybody else? Old business. Okay. Mark and Estrada council appointment. I'm just going to--
May I say one thing before you read that? Ben Portman and I talked the other day. One of the questions he had was why was this brought out in public instead of not behind closed doors? It is a state law that the council cannot talk about elected official in front of, behind closed doors. It's got to be public. That's any elected official in the whole state of Ohio. They got to be brought out in public. It cannot be behind closed doors. So he had asked that, so I knew since he asked that, there's probably a couple of other people wondering the same thing. That's--
It's been brought forward a couple of times, but that is something that probably should be brought forward.
Thank you.
Again, so thank you. Anybody else before I read it? And I am going to read this, it'll be a little bit easier. Estrada initiation decision. Turning to old business, last week, council considered again the appointment of council member Estrada and the problem that he was not a qualified electorate at the time he applied and was appointed. As council is aware, the means of addressing this issue, should council desire to do so, is through the removal process set forth in Article 11 of the city's charter. As council is further aware, although Article 11 of the charter requires the mayor to initiate the removal process, it is council which determines by a vote whether removal of a council member is appropriate. Because council ultimately would be responsible for deciding Mr. Estrada's status as a council member under Article 11, I have asked council for a motion recommending that I initiate the removal process if that is what council desires. Last week, after lengthy discussion, council member Chamberlain made a motion to recommend that I initiate the removal process. This motion was seconded and a vote was taken. The vote was three in favor, two against, and one member abstained. At the time, we believed the motion had passed, and I indicated that I would take the matter under advisement and let council know my decision on the matter at our meeting here tonight. Shortly after the meeting, we were advised by our law director, Tom McWaters, that because the majority of six council members did not vote in favor of the motion, that it did not pass. that it did not pass. Having considered the matter thoroughly, it is clear that council does not support the removal of Mr. Estrada. Under section 11.01 of the charter, a vote of three-quarters of the members of council would be necessary to remove Mr. Estrada, and Mr. Estrada would not be permitted to vote. This means that four out of five remaining council members would have to vote in the affirmative in order for a motion to remove Mr. Estrada to pass. During council's deliberations on the matter, however, at least two council members have made it clear that they do not intend to vote in favor of removing Mr. Estrada should the process be initiated. I therefore believe it would be fruitless and a waste of councils and the city's time to embark on the removal process that cannot possibly succeed. For these reasons, I decline to initiate the removal process against Mr. Estrada. It is now time for this council to move on to the important business of the city. As far as I'm concerned, the matter is now behind us. I look forward to working with council as we proceed forward in the best interest of the city. Can we have a motion for the approval of the bills, please?
Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Estrada. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Shant?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Five a, zero nays. Motion carries.
Motion for adjournment?
Come over.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Sturts for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.